Together comparing the proposed regulations in the overlay district with the Empire Township zoning ordinance, existing ordinance, and I didn't realize until today when Larry said he couldn't read it because the print was too small, that I didn't send you the correct one, which I just sent to everyone by email about a half an hour ago. And all I had to do was switch it to print in landscape fashion instead of portrait fashion and all of a sudden everything appeared large enough to be easily read. So I apologize for that. And as I reviewed it myself, I noticed a couple of typos, corrections that need to be made, but I'll go through those when we get to that. But here to make a presentation with us is Rob Carter and Tony Groves. And Ed or Dennis, are you going to be part of the presentation as well or just participating?
Dick, I will not be part of the presentation. I'm just here to give good wishes.
Okay, and we'll accept those. Okay, for those of you, I think you all know Rob, but for those of you who don't know Tony, Tony is the consultant who's been working with the Glen Lake Association and the folks working on this project for many, many months. And the proposed overlay regulations he's prepared were vetted, I guess if you will, at a meeting that Tim Seifer and I had with Sony, going back, oh gosh, maybe a year ago now. It seems like it was yesterday, but I'm sure it was much farther back. Do you remember, Tim?
It was at least a year, for sure.
So anyway, without any further ado, Rob or Tony, who wants to start? Rob? Okay. Can't hear you, Rob.
Unmute.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'm feeling special tonight. If you, the planning commission have scheduled a special meeting, I feel the specialness. Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to go back a few years and talk about how this whole thing got started. And I presented to the Glen Lake Association Board the idea of a overlay district. And I found out that there are several overlay districts in the country, but one most close to home is the Crystal Lake watershed. And I found out that that is probably a pretty good idea when it comes to supplementing our educational outreach to people to learn more about how to protect our surface and groundwater. And so I think a partnership that really is important is to bring together the townships and the association and all the residents of the watershed to work together on a common cause because after all, we all do share the water. And so we put together a task force and it's made up of about 16 people, believe it or not, ranging from Glen Lake Association riparians to township attorneys to zoning administrators. That's singular, actually, liaisons to our township from the association, Roy Pentle is that person, and even our Glen Lake Association staff. We have secured funding for this effort from a variety of sources. Principally, the Traverse City Rotary Charities gave a nice grant to help us out, offset our costs, along with the Sarah Litch Memorial Fund. We had all three of our townships contribute. Townships such as yourself and Glen Arbor and Casson, as well as Cleveland, that's actually four. And we also had underpinning financially from the Glen Lake Association. So it's really been a broad-based effort to to get this project funded because it does take time, energy, and money. As far as Tony Groves, he was one of three people that we interviewed, we the task force. And we found that Tony was really special because he has a certain aptitude, if you will, or a knowledge base about lakes, rivers, and streams. He's a limbologist of sorts and we we found that to be pretty valuable, but he's also very articulate in how government and watersheds can work together because he was the author of the Crystal Lake watershed overlay district, which by the way is 25-plus years going strong. And we actually interviewed realtors and people in the Crystal Lake watershed and said, how is it going after all these years? And the common theme was it's a gift that keeps on giving. And so we thought, found that to be a pretty positive response to something that could have been contentious, it could have been snags across the board, but we found it was running smoothly and that's a good sign. Another tidbit about Tony is just recently I went to the Michigan Inland Lakes Conference, virtual conference. It's usually in Grand Rapids, but we're saving a lot of travel time, aren't we, on Zoom? I think Tony's probably smiling the most on that one. He didn't have to.
I've got a big smile here, Rob.
So he was given a lifetime achievement award from the Northern, North America Lake Management Society. And it was pretty fitting for him to get such a national award like that. And it's because he's that good. So I think as he articulates this overlay district and goes through the various provisions, you're going to find out that not only can he articulate it, but he can also answer questions. And I would like to set the tone here by saying that he and I are going to tag team the presentation, mostly him, but some of me. So at any point in time, you want to think of it as just a Tony presentation or just a Rob Carter. It's actually a duet, if you will.
I'd like to interrupt you at that point, Rob, and ask everyone to go down to reactions and click on the clapping hands so we can show our appreciation for Tony's award.
And you can do like Roy and just do it on the screen.
Congratulations, Tony.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
So in this recent year, we were hoping to have educational forums in all four townships where we would secure the town hall and get into dialogues with watershed residents. But the COVID has really curtailed that. So what it has prompted us to be able to do is on our website, and many of you have probably been there, at least it's an uptick on our analytics, but our website has sported some actual language of the watershed overlay district, as well as some FAQs, frequently asked questions that we crafted with the watershed protection task force. We also created some videos. And we also have a website with a lot of new information. So if anything happens tonight and you want to go back and either fact check us, I guess that's one way of doing it. Or you can get more information, please go to our website because we spent a fair amount of time putting that together in the replacement of the educational forums that we had hoped that we would have accomplished through the summer, this past summer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony. And Tony, let's give it to him in a way that hopefully they can understand it, not too fast, but just right. And you are the guy that do it. So let's give a big hand for Tony.
Yeah. Thank you, Rob. And thank you, planning commission, for inviting us tonight and giving us the opportunity to to walk you through the overlay district. As Dick indicated, I think all of you should have received a package that has the draft watershed overlay district. And in that, under each section, there was a water quality rationale that explained the benefits of the provision. And what I'll do tonight is to go through it basically section by section. And if you have questions as I do this, or if something's unclear, feel free to weigh in and ask a question or stop me and ask for clarification. But most of what I'm going to present is in the document, the draft watershed overlay district document. And what I like to do is start out with just a little bit of background about Glen Lake. Glen Lake is one of the largest lakes in Michigan. It's about 5,000 acres. It's in the top 1% of lakes in the state in terms of size. It has excellent water quality, as we all know, very low in nutrients, excellent water clarity. It's one of the few lakes in Michigan that is.
Tony, when you, when you talk about Glen Lake, are you talking about just Big Glen or are you talking about them together?
Well, I'm talking about them together. The watershed overlay district includes both Little Glen and Big Glen, but I'm talking primarily, excuse me, about Big Glen right now.
Right.
Okay, okay. So in, it's one of the few lakes in Michigan that has a self-sustaining trout population. So I think really by any measure, it's an extraordinary and valuable community resource. And protecting Glen Lake and Little Glen Lake is really the primary focus of the watershed overlay district. When we talk about managing the lake and we look long-term at managing the lake, what we really need to focus on is the watershed. And the watershed is simply the land area that drains to the lake. Watersheds are sometimes referred to as drainage basins. And if we look at Empire Township, there's actually several watersheds in Empire Township. Some of the township, the south portion flows into the Platte River. The west part of the township flows in the Lake Michigan. A lot of the north portion of the township flows into the Glen Lake Crystal River watershed. And if, and Rob, if you can try to share your screen with us and maybe if you can call up the watershed map on page three.
I don't know if I have that one particularly, but.
There you go. That's the one. Okay. Well, now, if you look at that map, that map, the dark area is the land area that flows in to Glen Lake. And if you look closely at the map, you can see the township boundaries are identified. And there's four townships in the watershed, Glen Arbor, Empire, Casson, and Cleveland. Also, there's a fair amount of federal land in the watershed, part of the Sleeping Bear Dunes National Lakeshore. And those areas are shown as there's yellow hatching. And so those federal lands are designated on the map. And if you look real closely at the map, you'll see too that the individual parcels, individual lots are showing for the entire watershed. And this information was derived from the county GIS system. So the watershed overlay district would encompass the entire watershed. Now, within the watershed, Empire Township has about six miles of frontage on Little Glen and Big Glen. And Empire Township itself makes up about 39% of the total watershed. Now, when we look at the watershed, in terms of land cover, most of the watershed is forested. And like with most lakes, the development tends to be concentrated around the lake, near the lake. The soils in the watershed are sandy and they're very, very permeable. So when we get rainstorms, water tends to infiltrate quickly into the ground. We get very little runoff of the ground. And if you think about it, the watershed acts as a giant sand filter. Water falls, when it rains, falls on the ground, infiltrates in, as it seeps into the ground, it's cleansed by the soil, it's filtered, finds its way to the water table, and ultimately into the lakes, into Big and Little Glen lakes. Glen Lake, in fact, is primarily fed by groundwater. It's the major source of water to the lake. And probably the real simplistic way to look at this is to say that the lakes are really a reflection of the watershed. So given that, the question became, how can we manage the watershed to protect the lakes? And really, that was the genesis of this watershed overlay district. And Rob touched on that in his introduction. That's what we're trying to accomplish with this overlay district is manage the watershed such that we can preserve the quality of the lake. Now, when we started this project, and as Dick indicated, it was many months ago. But one of the first things I did was review the planning and zoning documents from each of the townships. And the Empire Township master plan addressed this issue of watershed management head-on. There were many references to it. Under the guiding principles on page two of the township master plan, and I'm just going to quote from the plan here, it says, "As the township's lakes and watersheds are a prime component of what makes it a popular place to live and to visit, water quality in the township is critical to the future success in the township. It's an appealing place to live and is an attractive destination for tourists." Then on page eight of the plan, it talks about individual watersheds. And it talks about the Glen Lake Crystal River watershed. And it notes that, as I indicated earlier, about 50% of the water supply to Glen Lake is from groundwater. And the plan states that it's important to protect upland areas from impervious surfaces or other development so, so that it won't inhibit the percolation of precipitation through the soil into the groundwater. Then the plan goes on to talk about watershed management. And it states that the quality of lake in Empire Township is dependent on the health of our watersheds and future land use should not degrade them. Then the plan takes one step farther and it throws out some techniques that can be used to protect the lakes, some watershed management techniques. And it mentions that we need to protect sensitive areas from development, establish a water edge buffer, limit the disturbance and erosion of soils during construction, treat the quality and quantity of stormwater runoff, and minimize the amount of impervious surfaces. And the Empire Township master plan mirrors very, very closely the watershed overlay district. They align almost identically with one another. And I'll walk through the various provisions now of the watershed overlay district and demonstrate the compatibility here. In the very first page of the overlay district, and if you have the document with you, you may want to refer to it, but you don't really need to. But the watershed overlay district, what that is, it's a supplemental set of zoning regulations that would apply to the entire watershed. And the provisions in the watershed overlay district would apply in addition to the provisions within the existing, what we call the underlying zoning district. So it's our hope that if we can get all four townships in the watershed to eventually adopt the watershed overlay district, we would have uniform water quality protection measures throughout the watershed. Now, it's important to note that the watershed overlay district, the intent is not to prevent or to stifle development. Rather, it's intended to ensure that future development will have minimal impacts on water quality. And as Rob noted, Crystal Lake has had a similar ordinance now in play in their watershed for over 25 years. And I like the way he framed that and the individuals that lived there framed it. It's the gift that keeps giving. It's been very successful there. And the approach here is very, very similar. Now, as we put this ordinance together and we looked at the various provisions, and as, as Dick mentioned, Dick and Tim kind of helped bet this thing as we, as we went through it. But we wanted to make sure that it was realistic, it would be enforceable. But at the same time, it's not going to be an unreasonable overreach or burden, either on the township and administering it or with the public in terms of having to adhere to the provisions of the ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that it was a very reasonable approach, a very tempered approach, but at the same time, it would be effective. So as we get into the kind of nuts and bolts of the ordinance, the first section deals with permitted and non-permitted uses. Now, all the permitted uses that are currently allowed in the zoning districts in the watershed are going to continue to be allowed. Nothing changes there with the exception of a handful of prohibited uses. And we listed some uses out that we felt would definitely be threatening the water quality. Things like confined feedlots, hazardous waste disposal sites, landfills. So nothing would change with respect to permitted uses with the exception of a few what we call non-permitted uses that would have the potential to threaten the water quality. As far as your set maxing lot width and lot area requirements, none of that would change. All that's going to remain the same as it is now. The watershed overlay doesn't change any of the dimensional requirements. The first provision we have that would potentially constitute a change would be one called shoreline vegetative buffer. And Rob, maybe if you could call up that graphic on page five of the draft. We've got a picture there of a typical, what we call a greenbelt or a watershed vegetative buffer.
Page five?
Page five, yes, sir. There we are. Yeah. So that's just kind of a typical shoreline vegetative buffer. And then the rationale for this is, is it provides habitat and helps filter runoff and prevent erosion. There was a large study done by the Environmental Protection Agency a few years ago. They looked at lakes nationwide and they found lakes that lacked shoreline vegetation were three times more likely to be in poor biological condition. So in situations where we've got manicured lawns right to the water's edge, that causes significant water quality problems. Many states, including Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, Minnesota, and Wisconsin, have statewide standards that require that vegetation be maintained along the lakeshore. Some of those requirements go back three, four, 500 feet from the lake. There can be building within that, but most of the shoreline vegetation has to remain. Michigan has no such standards. One of the findings of the watershed management plan for the Glen Lake Crystal River watershed that was done a few years back was that shoreline vegetative buffers would control or reduce the impact of almost all the pollutants that currently threaten the lake. So in the watershed plan, the importance of vegetative buffers was realized. Now, in the ordinance, the buffer requirements are this, that from the shore back, you would have to maintain 30 feet back from the shoreline, a natural vegetative buffer. Now, within that, 20% of it can be cleared. So if you had 100 foot of frontage, you could clear 20 feet of it. It doesn't have to be done in all one location, it could be done in multiple locations. But the net result would be no more than 20% of it could be cleared. Trimming would be allowed to provide a view. And it doesn't apply to the removal of dead disease or dying vegetation. Now, the Glen Lake Association over the years has done a number of studies of the lake, both Big and Little Glen, and studies of the shorelines. And right now, most all of the Glen and Little Glen shoreline, about 75%, has vegetative cover. And what we want to do is preserve what's there. And like with all zoning, it's important to recognize that this provision would require a property owner to establish a buffer if one does not already exist. These properties would, properties would be considered pre-existing, non-conforming uses and would be grandfathered in. So no one's going to be forced to put in a vegetative buffer, though we may want to try to educate them as to why they should do that. So if you didn't have a buffer now, you wouldn't be required to put one in. But if you do have one in, this provision would, would require it to be maintained.
Tony?
That's Rob.
Let's, let's just pause for a moment and let people catch their breath, or maybe you you don't need any time here, but let's just see if there's any questions at this point.
Sure.
Anyone have any questions for Rob or Tony?
I guess the only question I have is about the, so in other words, this, we would enact this, but you're only talking about if you're going to do a new build then on something that this would be, you'd have to have this buffer, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so often it's a small cottage, as we all know, that can be taken down and a newer, larger property or a building be put up. And the thought is that if there's a natural native greenbelt buffer and there's a natural shoreline that you can't just clear cut that, put in a lawn, and totally have a disregard to what's keeping the lake clean. There's some restrictions and I think Tony's outlined that in his previous comments.
Tony, does Empire have any restrictions now for the buffer zone?
There is. There is a, I think it requires that one-third of the trees be maintained near the shoreline. And that's outlined in, in Dick's comparison of the watershed overlay and the existing Empire Township regulations.
In which there's a typo in my comparison chart, I indicated that what the overlay district would require is a buffer zone 40 feet wide, when in fact, it's only 30 feet wide. I'd like to interject here if I could, because both Rob and Tony have mentioned the overlay district on Crystal Lake that's been in effect for about 20 years. I've had a fair amount of experience with that overlay district because I represented the county during the time that the county was responsible for zoning in all of the communities around the Crystal Lake with the exception of one. And since then, the townships that are involved are Crystal Lake, Benzonia, and Lake Township, which in effect have the same provisions for the overlay district as was in the former county zoning ordinance. And I represent those jurisdictions and I can tell you that I don't recall any real objection or any particular development that was abandoned because of those requirements. Now granted, much of the lake frontage had already been developed and so applying it to new development would be somewhat limited. But in all that time, I've been involved with them for over about 11 or 12 years. There has been, not to my knowledge, there's not been any project where the overlay district has presented a problem that's caused the project to be abandoned or caused any of the zoning units to get sued. So it's worked pretty well.
Thank you for that, Nick. Okay, Tony, I think we can press on.
All right. The, the next section of the ordinance has to do with hardened seawalls. And a hardened seawall, basically, the way we've defined it in the ordinance are seawalls composed of steel, wood, concrete, or other hard materials. And the water quality rationale for discouraging hardened seawalls is this, is that seawalls, we found over the years, that they tend to deflect waves and actually accelerate erosion. And what happens is, is when somebody puts a seawall in, and if you picture a wave hitting that, what it tends to do is it will run down the seawall and the first property that doesn't have a seawall, that wave will break there. And oftentimes, you're going to see erosion adjacent to the seawalls on properties on either side. Another issue is when that wave hits the seawall, it tends to get scouring downward and it will scour the foot of the seawall. So falls on lakes and found to be problematic. Another issue is that wave energy, if you have a lake that has a lot of seawalls, that wave energy isn't dissipated. So when that wave hits the seawall, if you think of a natural wave coming to shore, when it crashes on shore, that energy is dissipating. When you've got a seawall, that wave hits the seawall and it bounces back. And on lakes where you've got a lot of seawalls, what you find is the water gets real rough as you're getting this wave bounce where the waves will reverberate back out into the main body of the lake. And it makes for very, very rough waters and a fair amount of turbidity in the water because of all the, all the movement of the water. So another issue with seawalls, and B and R was really adamant about this, is they prevent the migration of frogs, salamanders, and whatnot in and out of the lake. So it becomes a problem. It's an impediment to the natural movement of aquatic life. So again, the Glen Lake Association did a survey, the entire shoreline of both lakes, and there's literally only a handful of hardened seawalls that currently exist on the lakes. So what the watershed overlay district would do, it would prohibit hardened seawalls and promote what we call bioengineering concepts. And these are soft engineering where you're going to use vegetation or stone, something other than a hard vertical surface to control erosion. So it discourages hardened seawalls. It does make an exception, though, if you've had a situation where erosion is occurring and soft engineering or bioengineering won't solve the problem, zoning administrator, in this case, Mr. Seifer, would have the discretion to allow a hardened seawall if that's what it takes to stop erosion from occurring. But in most cases, a soft approach is going to work and we want to prevent a proliferation of seawalls around the lake and the inherent problems when you have a lot of seawalls. And like the other provision related to the vegetative buffer, people that have existing seawalls would not be required to remove them. Those can stay. But moving forward, you would have to have a pretty bad erosion problem to warrant approval of a hardened seawall.
So let's stop there for a moment. Any questions?
Is stone considered a? Is stone considered a hardened seawall or not? No, well, if it's done properly, I'd say no. What stone will do, it's the vertical surface, hard surface, that's problematic. People will put stone on the shore, and oftentimes, that's done with bioengineering. You'll have an element of stone in there, and that still allows that wave energy to dissipate. It still provides habitat for some of the aquatic insects especially. So stone in and of itself, if done right, wouldn't be problematic. That's not specifically prohibited.
Okay. Larry? I think another way to describe the element of these hardened seawalls is what I refer to as engineered seawalls, meaning they're literally made out of dimensional material that are allowed to fit together and form a wall versus stone that's gathered and put on a stone. We refer to that as riprap and not a seawall.
Okay.
Okay, Tony, any other, any other questions on seawalls?
Rob?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? As it relates to grandfathering, both for the seawall and for the vegetative buffer, if a property doesn't have it and you sell it, someone goes to build, obviously, they can't put one in. If a property has it, and they sell it, the new owner can or cannot put, let's say, if it didn't have a vegetative buffer, would they have to put one in, or are they grandfathered with the property?
Tony?
I would say they'd be grandfathered with the property. On the seawall, on the vegetative buffer, that may hold true too. I guess I'd... Dick, if you want to weigh in on that, what would be your take in a situation like?
I think that's right. I think that the, what would be grandfathered would truly be grandfathered, would apply to, the benefit would be applied to the new owner as well as the old. So yeah, if I bought a property that didn't have the, they had a seawall, I could keep it.
And replace it if it's in disrepair, correct?
Right, right.
We actually, in the last three, four years, had one seawall come out of a property. John Silver home on the north shore of Little Glen, former supervisor, he took his seawall out because his house was more valuable and sellable without it. So it's interesting that whenever we see a sale pending, we like to get with the new owner, we, the Glen Lake Association, and educate them about seawalls, so that it could be that the sale doesn't happen until the seawall comes out, but that's not part of this overlay district. That's part of the educational arm that we use to make things that are good for the lake happen.
I've got a follow-up to that, too. Rob, is that, you know, when you look at hardened seawalls and number two, a lot of burden is being placed on the zoning administrator regarding practical alternatives. And my plan would be there to use a prudent and feasible alternative test, like the Department of, or Eagle, Department of Environmental Quality, has used for years, I'm very familiar with that. I would expect we'd get some kickbacks on things, because a lot of people like the quote-unquote "tried and true" method, but I think we'll be able to, because this will put some teeth into that, I would expect at some point in time, there may be a challenge on potential hardships and that sort of thing, and they're going to use economics or lack of rational testing in that respect. So I would think something would come up, somebody's going to feel like they want to have their place exactly how they have it at their downstate site as well. So I guess a lot of the question is related to Dick and supporting our decisions that we make, and Dick and I work very well together. Anytime I get in and I, what I think I'm going to be boxed into a corner, I'll call Dick to make sure I've got backup moving forward when a decision is made. So Dick, do you anticipate the same routine?
Well, it's hard to ever predict what could happen in the future, but I don't know that there's anything different that we could do here. This is, I think, enforceable, and, you know, it encompasses the basic principle in zoning that if you want to have an exception or a variance, you have to show that there are no practical alternatives.
Right.
And that's the same test, if you will, that's applied here, so I don't think there'd be a problem with it.
Okay.
No, speaking to...
Falls off the zoning administrator in the first instance, Tim.
Tim, I think one of the things you mentioned is economics, and my colleague, Tricia Denton, just texted me saying, you know, the engineered seawalls are far more expensive than the bioengineering.
Yeah. No, I understand, but some people like that old tried and true method, that they don't realize the harm that it's done. I know, right now, DEQ is allowing, or Eagle is allowing some in special circumstances, but they're what I call fan paling the ends to Tony's point, making sure the energy is dissipated versus helping to create erosion. But all the experience that I've had, you're still going to have erosion at the end of that. And I've seen it live and in color, especially with these high water that we're having along the big lakes.
Yeah, talk to Lake Charlevoix.
Right.
Lake Charlevoix is a land that rises and falls over the Great Lakes, and we know what that's happening like. So there, they're getting more and more seawalls as sort of the answer to this extremely high water levels on inland shorelines, where I don't think we're in that situation. We've got the Crystal River Dam, and we can control lake levels, and the need for, generally speaking, any inland lake in Michigan, the state of Michigan, really doesn't need hardened seawalls.
Right. But they are issuing a lot of those.
I know.
I mean, but the angular rock, one question for both Tony and one follow-up, the stone riprap, as we call it, angular rock seems to work the best, because that diffuses, that fieldstone can, if it's not properly placed, will roll and create openings with ice movement, and that sort of thing. And normally, the Eagle will allow some repair work to be done, still through the permitting process, and the Lake Association is always notified on things like that, so we'll keep a close eye on those applications coming in as well. Thank you.
Okay, Tony, I think we'll press on.
All right. Well, the next section of the ordinance deals with fertilizer use. And fertilizer is a major source of pollution on many lakes. And in some highly urban areas where we have year-round residents, and as I say this, I'm thinking Oakland County, many lakes have become green with algae. And in most cases, phosphorus-laden lawn services are especially problematic, in that phosphorus is the nutrient that accelerates what we call the lake acutification or aging process. And most soils contain adequate phosphorus to maintain good grass cover. And when phosphorus is applied in lawn fertilizer, it tends to run off. And once in a lake, a single pound of phosphorus can generate hundreds of pounds of aquatic vegetation. It's a limiting nutrient. So phosphorus is a real problem. Recognizing this problem, the state of Michigan passed a law that became effective in 2012 that banned the use of phosphorus in lawn fertilizers. Didn't apply to agriculture, but in lawn fertilizers. And that law was hailed at the time as a great accomplishment. Michigan had previously banned phosphorus in laundry detergent, and then in dishwashing detergent, so they've been after this for a while. Then they finally got to lawn fertilizers. The problem is, is that while the law was hailed when it was enacted, education and reinforcement remain a problem, because a lot of people are unaware of the law, and a lot of people... space fertilizers. So what the fertilizer provision of the watershed overlay district would do, it complements and reinforces the state law, and it prohibits the application of lawn fertilizer containing phosphorus unless the soil test documents a phosphorus deficiency, or if a new lawn is being established. And that's consistent with the way the state law reads. So this would, what this provision would do, it would bring this phosphorus fertilizer banned out to the local level, and I think it's more of an educational component, I can't see a lot of enforcement on this, but it brings it to the local level, would reinforce state law, because this is a major controllable source of pollution, and with a little education, little regulation, I think it can be managed. So that's the rationale for including a fertilizer use provision in the watershed overlay district. Any questions on this one? If not, let me move to the next section, and this deals with lot cover and natural vegetative cover. And lot cover is the portion of the lot covered by hard, impervious surfaces such as buildings, driveways, rooftops, any hard surface. And natural vegetative cover is the portion of the lot composed of natural vegetation, not including lawns. And the rationale for having limits on lot cover, and if you could scroll up just a little bit, Rob, maybe we can see the graphic, maybe it's on the next page, on page nine. No, it's right here, here we are. Yeah. What happens is, is development occurs in a watershed, the amount of imperviousness increases, and the amount of runoff, yes, I'm sorry, the amount of imperviousness increases as does the amount of runoff. And the amount of water then that infiltrates into the ground decreases. And this is something that's extremely important in the Glen Lake watershed, because we're so dependent on groundwater as our source of water. So the more hard surface you get, the more build-out you get, the less infiltration of water you get into the ground. So putting some reasonable limits on lot cover will help to prevent that scenario from playing out. The Center for Watershed Protection reported that water quality problems have been observed in watersheds with as little as 10% imperviousness. So it doesn't take a lot of hard surface to start to impact water quality. And what the watershed overlay district would do was limit lot cover to a maximum of 25% of the lot area. And one exception to that would be if you had a hard surface covering 10%, 25% of your lot, and you wanted to have more, so you wanted to have a longer driveway, then you'd have to use what's called pervious pavement. This is pavement that allows water to infiltrate through it, to drain through it. So we would limit lot cover to 25% and require that a minimum of 30% of each lot be maintained in natural vegetative cover. So we're trying to strike a balance here, where we don't have a whole lot that's completely stripped of vegetation, hard surface is all over, we want to minimize the amount of lot cover that we have to 25% of the entire lot area. These provisions with lot cover and vegetative cover would not apply to agricultural gravel mining operations, commercial or industrial uses. So this is primarily for residential development. So that's a quick overview of the rationale for those requirements. Anyone have any questions or want further explanation as to the rationale for that?
Yeah, Tony, I was just going to jump in and say that by comparison, the Empire Township, the existing Empire Township ordinance has the same restriction. 25% of the lot area can be, no more than 25% can be used for impervious surfaces, and then one exception is commercial property, which can be 75%. As to the natural vegetative cover, where the overlay provides 30, no more than 30% of the lot area, there is no specific provision relative to that in the existing Empire Township zoning ordinance. However, the natural vegetative cover is a factor that is to be considered during or in land unit development or in site plan review. So I point that out, because going from the existing ordinance to this requirement is not going to be much of a major step in that particular instance.
Any other questions on that?
Well, maybe we sit up at the 30%, just so we're making a difference. Just kidding.
Well, the next section has to do with stormwater management, and this is an important provision, because as more development occurs and the watershed is slowly built out, stormwater management's going to become a major concern. And what we want to do is make sure that stormwater management issues are addressed in the early stages of planning and design. And to that end, what we're promoting in the watershed overlay district are basically two things. One is this concept of what's called low-impact development, and they use the acronym LID for that, or LID. But what low-impact development does, it promotes the natural infiltration of stormwater. And with low-impact development, rainwater is treated where it falls by allowing rainwater to percolate into the ground. So you try to provide opportunities for water to infiltrate, as opposed to having to create a stormwater management system where you're draining it away in pipes or gullies, and you're putting it into a detention basin, and then having to have that drain to another location. You're trying to treat the water naturally, as it is now, the rainwater, allow it to naturally infiltrate into the ground. And you can create opportunities for doing that if you plan for it. And the highly permeable soils that we have in the watershed are ideal for it. We have these very sandy soils, water tends to infiltrate quickly. And what the low-impact development does, it promotes this concept of groundwater recharge, which is critical to the health, the long-term health of the lake. Low-impact development's being used across the country right now. It's often referred to as the win-win scenario. It's the winner for the community because of the environmental benefits associated with it, and for the property owner, it's a very, very cost-effective way to manage stormwater. It's far less expensive than building what we call stormwater infrastructure, and with a little bit of planning, this can be easily adopted. So that's one of the things we're promoting. Another provision of the stormwater ordinance is this idea of linking with the Leland County Soil Erosion Sedimentation and Stormwater Control Ordinance. The county ordinance requires that a stormwater permit be acquired for any earth change greater than one acre, any development within 500 feet of a lake or stream, for industrial and commercial development, and for subdivisions and site condominiums. And under the county rules, a land use or building permit won't be issued unless a stormwater permit has been obtained from the county. And what we want to do here is to link the watershed overlay district with that county ordinance. And basically, what the watershed overlay district would do, it'd accomplish two things. It would promote the infiltration, the natural infiltration of rainwater, and protect groundwater flows, critical to the health of the lake, and it would reinforce the county stormwater standards to ensure that stormwater management is considered as part of the development approval process. So it's not an afterthought, but it's when somebody is contemplating a development and starting to plan it, they'll be aware that, hey, I've got to give some consideration as to what I'm going to do with my drainage on site. And doing this early in the process can be very helpful and make these things feasible, and it's just integrated then as part of the site design. So that, I think, is a key component of the ordinance, and I think it'll be important, especially as we look long-term, as we see in upcoming years, as this watershed slowly gets built out with new development. And what Rob's got on the screen now is an example of what's called a bio-retention or a rain garden. It's just a simple structure that can be built to allow drainage water from a site to infiltrate into the ground, where the drainage is routed to that location, and then it just naturally infiltrates into the ground. And then it just naturally infiltrates into the ground.
Tony, I have a question. The provisions relative to stormwater management contained in paragraphs one and two, are those conditions met by the requirements of the Leland County Stormwater Runoff Control Ordinance? In other words, I guess, does the low impact development or low impact, yeah, development design, does that set a higher bar than what is established by the county?
Um, it's actually, it's compatible with it, Dick, in that one of the, in the county ordinance, one of the things they promote is infiltration of stormwater. And, and they're, and they want to get away from underground pipes and infrastructure. So it's not as much a theme in the county ordinance as it is here, but I'd say it complements the county ordinance. That's one of their objectives is to promote this type of development.
Okay. Tony, I've got a question too that, you know, I know we've been dealing this for a while and I'm surprised it didn't come up earlier in my mind, but Soil Erosion Control Office can only enforce the state law. And they're, they're permissive in the sense, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you saying that in section four, I won't issue any permits until the Soil Erosion Office comes forth connecting and issues a permit?
No, Tim, it would only apply to those situations that I just cited, which are taken right from the county regulations. So in other words, the earth change would have to be greater than an acre, or the development would have to be within 500 feet of a lake or stream, or it would be an industrial, commercial development, or a subdivision, or a site condominium. And so in those situations, the county requires that they get an ordinance, but it wouldn't apply to other developments that don't fit those county requirements.
Okay. So is four written in the sense that on lands within the Crystal River watershed, you're talking about the whole big picture.
Right.
They're subject to those provisions. I, I don't know if we need to make that clear because it does say subject to, maybe we don't. Maybe I'm just...
Well, that, that's why I put subject to provisions in there to, to make clear that this is only applying to those lands that are designated, that fall under the regulation of the county, consistent with the state statute. It gives them the authority to do it in the first place.
Okay. Well, I know I work for other townships too, and I think I brought this up back a while ago where there's specific language that requires, in a sense, the zoning administrator to be the Soil Erosion Control Officer of areas within the watershed. And we had to fix some language to make sure that, and Soil Erosion is already comfortable doing that. I don't know if you want to extend that further. That may be some burden on some specific property owners, but unless there's historical drainage and that sort of thing, we have had a few things that have come up over my 15 years in enforcement, that I've called in the Soil Erosion Office just for their expertise on things, but those are again in townships that allow more of a review if needed and determined by the zoning administrator to bring soil erosion control in on a specific site. And I know we've got the driveways already, and because of the steep slopes and that sort of thing, you know, there's a lot of driveways out there right now that are greater than 10%. And that's what the fire chiefs within FPA are using as well. So any thoughts on that?
Well, Tim, are you thinking of, of broadening the language then to have the, the county stormwater requirements, the permitting requirements apply to all development in the watershed?
No, I'm not saying all development, but there are things that can, just because of the nature of a particular parcel, especially steep terrain and that.
Yep. Okay. Well, Tim, I'll tell you what, I think I've got that addressed in the next provision.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me get to that because I think, yeah, I think that very point's addressed. And to your point, you're, you're right. When you get into steeply sloped areas.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. That, that's where we get into a problem. So, so that brings me out of the steep slope provision to the ordinance. And the steep slopes and ridge lines, I think really help define the character of the watershed. I mean, when you drive near the lake, you can just look in the distance and you see the bluffs and the ridge lines and, but these areas tend to be tricky to develop. Because they're sloped, there's much more potential for erosion and problems if care isn't taken in the, the planning and development in these areas. So what we did in the ordinance is define steeply sloped lands as all lands with slopes 12% or greater is showing on what we call the steep slope map. And in the ordinance, and I don't know, Rob, are you able to scroll back? I think it is on page four of the document, there is a, a map. It's a steep slope map that was created. There we are. Those areas in red on this map are areas where the slope exceeds 12%. And when I say a 12% slope, if you look at it this way, if you go 100 feet, that would mean you'd have a 12-foot rise over 100 feet. So if you ran a length of a football field, three times 100, it'd be a 36-foot rise. So that's getting to be a pretty significant slope. But what we did is we took very detailed topographic information, and we were able to then to create a map that shows all the areas in the township where the slope exceeds 12%. So this would guide, help you identify which parcels in the watershed would meet this 12% criteria. Now, on lands greater than 12%, there is a provision in the county stormwater ordinance that says a locally unit of government can identify an area as being environmentally sensitive, and then it would fall under the county's jurisdiction to issue stormwater permits. So the way I phrased it in the ordinance is that lands greater than 12% would be designated as environmentally sensitive, and then as a result of that, be subject to the county stormwater regulations. So that way, any development on a slope greater than 12% is going to get the county involved and that individual then would have to obtain a permit through the county. So we would expand then the storm, the county stormwater regulation to include steeply sloped lands. And on areas where the slope's greater than 12%, we would bump the natural vegetative cover requirement from 30% to 40%. So you're going to be able to have less clearing on a steeply sloped parcel, again with the idea of trying to minimize the potential for erosion. We would also, in the ordinance, it discourages the removal of vegetation, excuse me, along ridge lines, bluff tops, and natural drainage courses. So you wouldn't be able to go in there if you're going to build on a steeply sloped area, you would have to try to protect the hilltops, the ridge lines, the top of the ridges, and natural drainage areas. You would be discouraged from clearing those areas. And this provision of the ordinance also provides for what's called an alternatives analysis. If somebody came in with a plan and, you know, they had the house sitting right on top of the hill and they had excessive clearing, you could say, well, look, you're not meeting the requirements of the ordinance. You need to come up with an alternative and you need to do another analysis of your site to come into compliance then with the steep slope provisions of the ordinance. So does, anyone have questions about this particular provision and the rationale for it?
I want to, Tony, if I can, just speak quickly to this map that everybody hopefully can look at. And if you sort of size up Empire Township and you look at where the steep slopes are, a majority of it is in the national park boundaries to the west and to the south. However, if you can see my cursor, this is the region of Empire Township, sort of east of Hatlam Creek. And, and you can see all of these hilltops here that even go as far south as in this area here. You're not talking about a large amount of the township being impacted by this provision. It's just a subset of the, the total township boundaries for steep slopes. And you look at the number of parcels within these areas, you're talking about a hand, not a handful, but far less than the whole ramification of the steep slope provision against the entire township within the boundaries of the watershed.
One thing I found interesting in putting, doing a comparison with the overlay district and our existing ordinance requirements is I confronted the difference between degrees of slope and percent of slope. And I remember, Tony, we talked about this once before. I, I looked you for some guides here if I've got this wrong, but the, a 12% slope is, I determined by formulas I found online, is a 21, approximately a 21-degree slope. Now, our ordinance sets, called, doesn't provide that the slope, slope is a steep slope until it beats, it's 30 degrees or greater. And by the calculation I have, I made on a, with the formula online, a 30-degree slope is approximately a 57% slope. I don't remember when we drafted this ordinance, it wasn't clear in my mind that we were thinking of a steep slope that high. I think, at least in my mind, when I heard the term 30-degree slope, I thought that was meaning 30 feet rise and 100 feet of length, which is a 30% slope. And that's something we need to take a look at, but you know, clearly, I don't know, I could do anything out of 50% slope. That would really be tough.
That would, that would be tough, yeah. All right. And if we get to the, the next section has to do with the, the general design standards. And, and really what we're trying to do here in a nutshell is to, as someone, as you're looking to develop a site, maintain as much natural vegetation as possible on the site. We're trying to minimize grading and clearing and soil compaction and protect natural drainage areas. And we're kind of reinforcing this idea of utilizing low-impact development practices to promote the infiltration of stormwater on sites. And Rob, if you can scroll down just a little bit, there's an interesting graphic here that illustrates some of the things that can be done on site to promote infiltration of water. And, you know, we're picturing the rain gardens there. That was that picture I showed earlier. The porous pavement, that's the pavement that allows water to basically infiltrate through it, conserving natural areas. There's even a rain barrel showing on there. But to the extent we can have future development in the Glen Lake, Crystal River watershed, built with this low-impact development concept in mind, I think we can really minimize the impacts that development will have because most of the water from the site won't, from these development sites in the watershed, won't be running off down to the lake. They'll infiltrate into the ground as they do now. They'll be naturally cleansed by the soil. And this is probably the, one of the most important things we can do long-term to protect the quality of the lakes.
And I might point out for the group that while our current ordinance does not have these specific requirements listed as they are in the overlay district, many of those, many similar protections are in fact already provided for in various sections of the current zoning ordinance, but they're not grouped together as they are in the overlay district. And certainly, I like the way they're laid out in the overlay district.
Good, good.
Jump to go from what we currently have to what's required or proposed in the overlay district.
Excellent.
I, I have a quick question. Would there be any benefit to just incorporating these points into our existing ordinance as opposed to having a overlay district ordinance?
Larry, that's an interesting question. Did I see, is Trish on the line or Rob? Yeah. Is it Cleveland Township thinking of doing that? Somebody, one of you told me?
Cleveland Township is adopting it township-wide and not having it be an overlay district. I was going to ask a question to Tim Cypher as a zoning administrator. Would you rather have to deal with this, with an overlay? Or, you know, if something's good for one part of the township, why wouldn't it be good for the whole township? Would it be more simple to administer something like this across the whole township?
Well, that...
Not to.
That's an interesting question. Trish, let me make sure I'm unmuted. Yeah. Because it, it, it brings to the point, the whole reason for the overlay is because of the water quality criteria set forth for Glen Lake, the Glen Lakes, I should say. And to burden someone who's not in the overlay district overall with these type of things may be good in the long run, but zoning shouldn't be set up just for ease of enforcement.
Well, will you take, take a look at, at the, on page five, whatever that overlay district was, that the majority of the township is in the overlay district, isn't it?
Let me go back to that page.
A good, a good sizable portion of it is, Larry. I don't know if it's the majority of the township, but it's probably fairly close. Comment I would have, I guess, is if it's not, whatever part of the township is not part of the Glen Lake, Crystal River watershed, is part of another watershed. As Tony pointed out earlier, it's part, the southern area is part of the Platte River watershed.
Right.
Then there's the remainder where everything flows into Lake Michigan. And it seems to me that if the criteria or the regulations are desirable for one watershed, they ought to be desirable for all watersheds.
So maybe it would be renamed? Is that what you're getting at? Just to have a watershed overlay district, but include the entire township?
I don't even think you need a watershed, an overlay district in that case if you're...
No, 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 you wouldn't. I guess that's my point.
You don't include the whole township. You build these regulations into the overall ordinance that would apply to all property.
I guess what I was getting to specifically answer Trish's question is, it may be difficult at times to say was a property in or out of the district. And I know you've, you've worked the map so that the property lines are in there. There'll still be some judgment calls, and that's respect, but that's really up to the planning commission. You know, my job is to enforce what you approve and the township board does. And I don't know, we'll have, we'll obviously have much more input, and maybe not because of the percentage of federal land involved as well, but it, it's an interesting concept. Did, let me ask Trish a question. Do you know why the Crystal River, or the Cleveland Township has gone that route? I mean, they just passed a steep slope view shed, excuse me, not a view shed, but a steep slope ridge line ordinance. So were they going to modify that as well?
Part of what they want to look at is, they believe, as, as Dick has pointed out, there's existing zoning that probably already meets similar, or if not, you know, identical types of things that are outlined in this proposed overlay. And in Cleveland Township in particular, it's, it's a very visibly water, water's very visible in Cleveland Township as well. There's Lime Lake, Little Trent Lake, it's part of the Lake Leland watershed, in addition to Glen, Crystal River, but Harbor watershed. So they're thinking was like... So they're thinking was like, it's good for one township, why wouldn't it be good for the whole thing?
Yeah, that makes sense, that does.
Well, I think one of the things you'd have to consider here, looking at this township wide, is, let me ask a question, does Empire Township have 36 sections to it? Is it a full township?
Oh, that's a good question, Tony, we should know that, I'm not sure. I don't think it is because of Lake Michigan.
Because I know that about, bear with me for a minute, we have about 90, 9,500 acres of Empire Township is within the watershed. In a, a full township with 36 square miles, that's about 23,000 acres. So that, that's something to consider.
I, I do believe we do have, we have more than, well, we're, we're losing some sections due to Glen Lake, but we also gained some along the, the lakeshore. So we, I think, I think we do.
You think we got the full 36? So then the overlay would only be a, a, a portion of the watershed, like 25, 30% or something, if I'm doing my math right. So something to consider, trying to make this township wide, because some of the provisions in the overlay are, are based on the kind of the uniqueness of the watershed, the, the hills and, and valleys and, and the quality of the lake and the things they need to do above and beyond to protect the resource long-term. I'm not sure that same rationale would apply if we look at the Platte River watershed. I believe there's two watersheds that go to the Platte River, one goes to the North Platte River and one goes to the Platte River, as I understand it, in Empire Township. So it, it's an intriguing question, and I mean, it'd be great if you could do it township wide, but we'd have to give that some thought as to the implication of that. It might be a difficult thing to, to sell to people. I think on Glen Lake, people understand the valley, the lake, and it's a relatively small area that drains to it. This could cover substantially more land area. And just something to think about, I haven't thought of it in those terms, but something to think about.
What, what would be the complications to having it in both? I mean, we're talking about, are we talking about window dressing or packaging of what the contents are in such a way that if it's in both the overlay for the sake of continuity amongst the other four townships, then we can speak in a language that everybody understands? However, if it's a township-wide basis, there's no harm to the overlay, and if they're all in the same contextual and vernacular and, and language, why not have it in both?
Well, are you suggesting that you have in one township, like Empire Township, these regulations throughout the whole township and also have them in an overlay district? Because you really wouldn't need an overlay at that case.
I'm thinking for the other townships, Glen Arbor and Casson, for, I think this speaks more the overlay to Casson than maybe other townships, because the, the overlay and the boundaries of that watershed in Casson don't take up nearly as much land as in Glen Arbor and Empire.
Right.
So that makes sense for an overlay for them. But for the sake of keeping the theme and the water quality protection long-term, I like the packaging or the window dressing, if you want to call it that, but the guts, the nuts and bolts of it could be in both an overlay district and in the current zoning for the whole township.
One problem with extending the regulations to the entire township is the opposition you may encounter. Right now, while we have before us the Crystal Lake, or yeah, Glen Lake Crystal River overlay district, you have a number, a lot of properties, a lot of residents along both Glen Lake and Little Glen Lake, for whom water quality is very important and maybe very much in favor of something like this. Whereas in the southern part of the township, you're not going to get much support for the area that's in the Platte Lake watershed, because the folks there probably don't see themselves as having anything to do with Platte Lake. And they may say, well, let the people on Platte Lake come up with something like that, but I, I don't know, it may be just, it may create an obstacle to getting, it may be tougher to get it throughout the whole township than.
Yeah, but if you're talking about seawalls, somebody that's out in the middle of wherever, it's a non-issue.
That's right.
Yeah, most of these provisions are focusing on the shoreline, for sure.
Yeah. I, I was just a thought.
That's a good thought.
Okay. Well, the one issue that we would have for seawalls is that, obviously on Lake Michigan, especially in light of the high water that we've had.
Yes.
Just had a lot of seawalls built, so.
That'll be grandfathered.
Correct. But getting one in, you have to show, you know, that's the thing, it's, it's just, if we, the water again, or if it continues to rise for another year, it would be difficult then, we have zoning that says that they wouldn't have it.
Would we even have the authority to regulate seawalls on Lake Michigan? I thought that was the state.
That's, that'd be Eagle anyway, so they're gonna trump us.
Right.
Interesting.
I can't get used to them being called Eagle, Tim.
No, I can't either, it's been DEQ or
Okay.
An interesting topic of discussion, that's for sure.
And, and what I can do too, I could get a map, I'll, I'll try to define the boundaries of those other watersheds in the township, just so we can get a visual of what that looks like. But I think to Dick's point, I think you're right, once you get away from the water, people are going to be much less enthusiastic about doing things to protect water quality if they don't feel they're in the watershed. You know, they, that's going to be something that's, yeah, I, I think it's going to be hard to get that support on a township-wide basis. But we, we can certainly look at the watersheds and get a better feel for that.
I was gonna ask Dana if she, I said, I thought we had a watershed map from our master plan, and Dana's one step ahead of us, good job.
There we go.
There it is.
Yeah, this is, this is the watershed map that was developed by county equalization for us just a couple of months ago.
Can you slide that over to the right?
Uh, no, what are you looking at?
The eastern half of the township, roughly.
Right there.
It's a full screen on mine.
Yeah.
It's Casson Township to the right.
Yeah, I see Casson Township, and then the boundary of the, of the graphic is about one quarter away from the right side of my visual. There, that's, now we're seeing more, oop, now we're back to where we were.
Mine doesn't move.
Oh, because I, I was gonna say, I haven't moved it, so.
User error at this end.
Is, is the green?
Area provider.
Is the green portion, that, that's the Glen Lake Crystal River watershed, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that gives us an idea, it, it's like I thought, it's probably 25, 30%. So the, most of the township, about two-thirds of it is not in the Glen Lake Crystal River watershed.
It looks like there's even more of the township, or perhaps at least as much if not more in the Platte, or the Platte River Pearl Lake, not Pearl Lake, the Platte River watershed.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Interesting.
Dana, that was real helpful.
Yes.
Dick, Dick, I think you made the most compelling argument to keep it in an overlay is the, the ability to sell this and move forward on something that's a little more streamlined than if you start going into these other three watersheds in your township.
Right, yeah, I, I think we want to, we want to win here, we want a success. I think that's a better way to go myself. Well, thank you Dana, that was great that you brought that up.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
That's why it's the big bucks.
Yeah, there you go. Now, there's this one more section in the ordinance, and that's the final section, section four, that has to do with approvals.
Okay.
And what was being proposed there is that what we'd like to see is have a mechanism in place would receive some level of approval, to make sure that the development's consistent with the provisions of the overlay district. Now, right now in Empire Township, site plan review is required for residential development with four or more dwelling units, non-residential greater than 1,200 square feet, commercial and special uses. So the types of development that require site plan review would continue to require site plan review, but they'd also have to include these various provisions of the watershed overlay district. Now, for development that doesn't require site plan review, and that's the majority of development, doesn't require a formal site plan review by the planning commission, we would still want some level of review, maybe just a cursory review by the zoning administrator, excuse me, the zoning administrator. And that would involve the submittal of what we call a plot plan, that would address the issues that are related to the watershed overlay, but wouldn't kick in a full-blown site plan review. But this would just be a, a plot plan review by the zoning administrator, which could be a much more expedited process. But at the same time, it would make sure that we're getting compliance for all development that occurs within the watershed overlay district.
Tim, you're muted. Tim, we were just gonna ask what you guys, the zoning administrator, thought of that, but you were muted.
Yeah, I, I had my mute on, my apologies. So, yeah, the site plan review, we've got specific details that relate to that site plan review that are required, the review is required through the planning commission as well. And a lot of these standards are already embedded in that. Under plot plan, I'm wondering on 4B5, existing structures on subject property, that's no problem. I, I've been thinking about this, and where it says, "and abutting parcels." I'm not sure of the reasoning behind that, or if, I mean, with Google Maps and things like that and site visits, I can look at those things, but this says, I think, shall, right, shall provide, let's see.
Yeah, it does, Tim.
Yeah, or must. So abutting parcels. I'm not sure that that's really relevant, or what the reason, maybe it's relevant, but I'm not sure what the reason is, because I'm gonna see those, when I go out and do a site visit in that respect, I'll see if there's a historical drainage swell, or somebody from the next door might be already shedding water on some, on other properties with a grandfathered status put in, that was built, you know, 50 to 100 years ago on things. I just wanted to get your thoughts on the language and abutting parcels for plot plans. Thank you.
Now, Tim, I, I see your point there, and with, with the technology today and the, you know, the aerial photography stuff we didn't have years ago, yeah, that, that's not a critical provision, that could be removed. If you think it, it would complicate things in a plot plan, that's not a, there's no compelling reason to leave that in, we could delete that with no problem.
Well, the one thing too, Tony, is that, make sure I'm not muted, yeah, the one thing too, is that obviously site plan reviews require 300-foot letters for special land uses, so it would, it would fit for sure for a site plan review, just for a plot plan, I, I don't know if you could put an asterisk in there and say, "accepting plot plans for the abutting parcels."
Okay, that, no, it makes sense, I can, I can, I can tweak that, we can make that work, Tim, that makes good sense.
That's all I had, though, everything seemed straightforward.
Great.
Good comment, Tim.
You know, each time you read it, you pick up different along the way in practical application, so it's, it's been right in front of me, I think, for a year.
Okay, anything further, Tony or Rob?
No, I, I think that I'm pretty well satisfied with the presentation, the Q and A that goes with it, and I'm now interested in how the commission is reacting, as, as all of you have given this time tonight, and, and I'm just wanting to get sort of a gut check, straw vote kind of thing as to how it looks.
Well, I think we have at least two or three options. One, we could discuss this among ourselves tonight and decide that we have enough here to call for, or schedule a public hearing at our meeting in January, in which case, once we've held the public hearing, we would discuss it further, then make a recommendation to the township board. Another option would be to sit on this, some of us, I've, Tim and I have seen this for some time, and most of the others on our planning commission have only had it for a couple of weeks, and they may want some time to review it in more detail and think about it, and put it on our agenda at the January meeting. And then we could decide at that time whether to schedule a public hearing for February. The only other option is to say, thank you, Rob, thank you, Tony, but we're not interested, it's definitely not an option. Definitely not an option.
How, how would a public hearing work in our COVID times?
Well, you know, that's a good question. If for that reason alone, I think I'd like to go wait until February to hold it, see what happens. Maybe, maybe many of us will be vaccinated by then. Right now, we can't meet, except virtually, until the 31st of December. There are two bills, there is a Senate bill and a House bill pending now, which will likely get acted on this week, to extend the requirements relative to the meeting, Open Meetings Act and virtual meetings through, or up to the end of March. So I really, I'm not sure, holding a public hearing with a lot of public input, if that's what we get, is going to be difficult on Zoom. You know, those around, like Dwayne and Larry, you guys were around at the, and Eric, you were here when we were going through this zoning ordinance, a master plan 15 years ago, and we had a packed house on some of those nights, and some of those people told us what they really thought about us.
I guess, I have a question, is draft, we say, hey, this looks good, we want to go with it, and then Glen Arbor says, this looks good, except for one session, they want to amend it. Then do we have to go back and change ours to agree with Glen Arbor's?
Only if we want to.
Now, you are, you can stand completely and totally autonomous with this overlay as a township.
Okay, but is it gonna be self-defeating if everybody has, you know, different tweaks in it?
That's, that's gonna be where Tim Cypher pulls out his hair, depending on which township is in, how he enforces it. So ideally, Larry, we want all the townships to embrace all of the provisions equally.
Well, that's, that would be, that'd be my thought, and I would think that if you could just get some type of, do you have any feeling from any of the other townships? You know, do they want to make any changes, or are they, are they good with, with what has been presented?
Right.
I'd be interested in hearing what Glen Arbor Township says, because I know in the past, I've suggested to the planning chair in Glen Arbor Township that we should get together so that we have the same regulations on the south side of the lake as on the north side of the lake, and I've been told, well, And I've been told, well, why is there a problem?
Right.
So I'm not sure that until they handle this, I don't know what their position's going to be. Tim, do you have any feel for it? They're not even meeting virtually, are they? They're just doing everything.
They're the township's getting set up right now, but that that leads to a question for Rob. Your your group is still planning on meeting with, I think, Glen Arbor in January, correct? We have no dates set up for January, but. How about the other townships? And I'm I'm just talking out loud here, would it be prudent to collect all input from the townships? I don't want to kick the can down the road, obviously, but it would be would it be prudent to get other townships' input? Just because there might be comments that come up, whether it be from the public or that, have everybody go through their public hearing process, see what gets flushed out. I mean, we've got very smart people here, but so do the other townships as well. And if we're trying to have uniformity, boy, it sure would be nice. I know I've worked very hard and for townships and that abut Lake Leland to get the same language described, definitions, all that sort of thing. So it's it's just definitely an enforcement benefit. But like you say, Rob, it people like to be autonomous on some things. Yeah, and I I feel like you know, going into this process, I knew that all the four townships were not going to sit down in one meeting and flesh it all out. That wasn't going to happen. And so we have to go township by township, which we're doing. And we are planning in the next however many months with COVID being the qualifier on this. We are going to meet with Glen Arbor soon. They're our next stop. And we are going to go to Casson and Cleveland. And so hopefully by what, March, April, May, we're going to be having completed our circuit of putting this proposal in front of people and letting them chew on it. And I would like to see the four township planning commission chairs after those have all met to kind of talk through how everybody in their respective planning commissions have reacted to this, and what are the tweaks and what are the contentious parts? And maybe if all four townships could agree that we finally have a unified document with unified language and that there's been some give and take that embrace it holistically would be just a total win for everybody. But it's going to be a case where we need to play this out with Glen Arbor next, Casson, and Cleveland, or some order of that magnitude.
Well, I'd be happy to, or I'd be I'd be interested in seeing what kind of a reaction you get in Glen Arbor Township.
Yep.
And as far as the different, the chairs getting together to compare notes and see, you know, what we'd like to do. It seems to me, based on your meeting schedule, we wouldn't be able to do that until maybe March or April even.
Correct. Correct. But there will be a time where I feel like the leadership of each of these commissions could get together after all the, you know, the processing of the proposals have taken place like it's taken place tonight. And and as leaders, you guys can help steer the future of this overlay holistically and uniformly. Rob, I've got a question for you too. Because of the off-season right now, and a lot of summer people are away who might want to weigh in because they'd be more inclined to support something like this, living down the lake in that respect. Have you given thought to that as well? Well, because of COVID, we didn't have the open forums like we were hoping to. And so we had our communications committee chair look at the analytics of Facebook and how many people are hitting our website and how many people are actually clicking on the overlay district and assuming that if they're there, that they're clicking on the videos and the actual proposal and the FAQs. We're getting a lot of traffic on this. And so I feel like we did our very best to get the word out, to share the proposal and to keep it in front of people through various media connections. It's been on the front cover of the Traverse City Record Eagle. It's been in the Leland ticker. It's going to be on IPR radio. I mean, we we have really put this out there. So I don't feel like we're trying to pull one over on those summer folks that know nothing about this. We really worked hard to get it out there. I see Tricia's hand up.
Good points. Trish?
Like Rob said, the other than the homepage of the Glen Lake Association website, the number one place on our website that is getting traffic is the overlay district link. So that is where people are going on our website right now. And it's been pretty consistently that way for the last couple of months, I think, in line with, as Rob shared, this communications effort that we've done to do a general, you know, broad-based campaign so that people have heard about this thing, in addition to multiple mailings, one of which went to every address in all four of the townships. And then the second one that went out to every single address in the watershed. So it's it's out there. And and I can share, if people are concerned about, you know, public meetings and public hearings, there's a number of other of other things that I'm involved with, so other parts of my life. I have experienced, I've been a part of several public hearings that have been conducted on Zoom, and the participation has been, I think, outstanding. It would allow for people who, if you're, if you do it in a virtual format like this, it would allow for members of the public to participate from wherever they are, down country, downstate, wherever they, you know, reside this time of the year, if they aren't full-time residents during the time of the year when maybe they aren't quite as busy. And when they're up here at the lake, or they're up here at their northern home, they want to be, they don't want to be sitting in a meeting, right? I just assume do this in January, February, and hop on a Zoom call and take care of it.
That's a good point, because even the snowbirds could participate from their winter home in Florida.
Exactly.
Plus, by having them be able to participate like that, we do away with the often stated complaint in the summer. You always do this when we're not around.
Dana, Dana has the ability to put the mute button on anybody that gets out of hand.
I'm substantially better as a bodyguard when it comes to Zoom than.
One more thing, I know that even if the our state government does not pass this extension on public meetings, you know, being able to be held virtually, the County Board of Commissioners plans tonight to extend their own emergency order for Leland County so that townships and other bodies would still be able to meet in the virtual way. So I covered there too.
Good, that's good.
Dick, I've got one question for you, and that is because there's going to be a zoning change, and it's not the entire township, are we going to be burdened with 300-foot letters to all these property owners?
Is that for me?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah, me too.
My guess, my guess is no.
Okay.
That's just a guess. I don't feel confident in that yet. Let me, let me take a look at that.
I was a little bit uncomfortable too, because there is a border defined.
Yeah, right, that's right.
Okay. Well, let's compare notes in a few days on that, okay?
Okay.
Because our recording secretary might have to set aside more than a day or so if that's the case.
Okay, any other comments by anyone?
I can say this, Dick, that I would like a little bit of time to chew on some of this stuff that we that presented today. Me personally, you know, I'm not speaking for the group, but me personally, I'd like at least a month to chew on this a little bit. Just so I can kind of go through some of the and just think through some of the ramifications of each thing. So I I appreciate that what Tony did, he went through and explained everything and and Rob, I and I don't think they did, they did a great job. So I just want to, was kind of, like I said, just kind of chew the fat a little bit, just so I know what I'm doing, what I'm getting into here. So.
Well, Mike, are you suggesting that we move this item to our January agenda for further contemplation?
Yep. For me, yeah. Yep, I'll make that a motion.
Is there support?
There is support.
Support by Dwayne?
Yep.
Any discussion? Dana, call the roll, please.
Shue.
Yes.
Fogan.
He's muted. He said yes.
Okay. Dean.
Yes.
Project.
Yes.
And Figuera.
Yes. Okay, the motion has passed. That will be on our agenda for our January meeting. Tony and Rob and Trish, thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. Does any member of the public wish to comment? We have Roy, you're not our only public here tonight.
I have no comment.
No comment. Dennis, how about you?
You know, I just was here because I'm with the Glen Lake Association. I've worked on this, and I just wanted to hear the discussion. Thank everyone for putting this meeting together. It's a busy time of the year, so we appreciate your willingness to sit through this and listen. And as you go through it, if you have questions, don't hesitate to call Rob or Tony. You know, we're happy to, you know, get involved with it and answer your questions, et cetera. So please use that if you're running into questions as you read it.
Okay. Very good. Let me get my agenda here. Next item, any other member of the public have a wish to make a comment? Next item then is board comment. Dwayne?
Well, first, thank you to all three of you. And I really do support the idea, Rob, that you alluded to that everybody in the various townships get together at some point and kind of discuss and hash this out through. I think there's a lot of wonderful things there. It would be nice if we were consistent, and that's if we're not, we're not. But it would be a nice attempt to go that direction first. We're not in a hurry that we don't have to have this done in three months or three weeks. We have to have it done right. And I think that's the important thing right now. So it was a good read. I got a lot out of it. I feel that you guys have done a tremendous amount of work, and and thank you for that and for the Glen Lake and the people on the lake.
Thank you, Dwayne. Larry?
My question is that when you meet with these other townships, and if there's there's a stumbling block, can you report that back to us?
Absolutely.
Now, we made one tweak already tonight.
Yeah.
That was, that was a good one. Thanks to the careful watch of Tim and his and his rethinking of something he's already looked at for a long time.
Anything else, Larry?
No, that's.
Eric? Any comments? He's shaking his head, no. You're muted, Eric, so we can't hear you if you want us to talk. Okay, there you go.
Am I hot? Am I hot?
Yep, you are.
No, it's clear. There's no comment.
Okay. Micah, how about you?
Well, you know, like I said, I think this was put together wonderfully. I think that, you know, Tony, Rob, Trish, you guys did a great job. And you know, you know, my personal feeling initially was this is probably taking in a bit much. But I really appreciate the the explanation, the reasoning. It's all right there. And that's part of the reason why I just want to chew it a little bit, because it it makes sense. And it, you know, it's all right there for me to just kind of agree with. So I I kind of like that. So you made it easy for me. And so I just need to sit down and I've read it once through before, and now I just got to kind of let it sit a little bit so I can kind of, you know, just kind of get the flavor in my tongue, I guess. So it's a great job.
Very good. Again, all I have to say, is that it, Micah?
Yes.
Okay, all I have to say is, Rob and Tony and Trish, thank you very much. I thought this was a very profitable evening, very informative, and you all have done yeoman's work on this and be congratulated. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
That will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Larry, as usual. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When we're meeting virtually, we got to take roll call votes.
That's right.
Actually, the chair can declare the meeting adjourned, and I will do that. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.